Okay. Call the meeting to order, I don't know if I'm going to Sarah.
It's happening.
Four minutes later. So sorry. I'm four minutes late starting the meeting. We'll call the meeting to order at 10:04 and we're going to have Sarah do the roll call. Here, valuable, up here, Ryan Erickson, up here, and Tom Hartman, are you on the call? I don't see them on there. Hey Barbara, can you just give me a realty check in your ass?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so it looks like Tom is not online. And Patricia Rockwell?
Here.
Julia Stidham?
Yeah.
And Bob Matur.
Yo.
Okay. We are four, we're good, yeah. Okay. He said he's going to be online for a while. So next up is the consent agenda, which, oh pledge of allegiance, I'm sorry. Oh, we have a flag. Patricia would be lucky to leave some of that.
...... And seemingly private, which has one of these, a hundred dollars, any particular with the provision of such as for.
Thank you. I want to do the go over again. All right, next up is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the Penn Valley Act audience or staff requests a specific item to be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Any item removed will be considered after the motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you. All right.
You gotta pick a vote, don't you?
He said.
No, no, no.
All right.
Boy, you're confusing me, Bob.
Okay. Oh, I see.
So I just have a quick announcement to make, which is that earlier this year, we got updated guidance from the community development agency about which projects the MAC will be taking a comment on. And so we're going to keep relying on this new guidance and making sure that we just follow that guidance. And so that guidance includes the project must have a discretionary element to it. The project cannot be within Lake Wildwood and the project must be within the boundaries of the Penn Valley Act. And then on our related note, just to make sure everybody knows, we do sometimes cancel meetings if we don't have a project to review or some selling and land use issue to discuss. And so that being the reason why we cancel meetings, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that because we had a little gap in meetings. And it's not for lack of wanting to see each other, we just didn't have anything to, you know, talk about. So we want to honor everybody's time and only need when we mention. And so if you have any items that you'd like to put forward to discuss at that and that meeting, you can always reach out to the chair, to supervisor hook, or to Sarah. So that's it for my announcement. Next up, we have public comments. And this time we set aside for persons wishing to address the Penn Valley Act on any matter of interest that is not on the agenda. Members of the public can provide general comments on items that are of interest to the public and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Penn Valley Act. Action will not be taken at this meeting on citizen comments. However, after hearing from interested citizens, we may place that item on future agenda. So the proper notice will be given to all interested parties. So is there any public comments tonight? You're the number of folks on my screen who are just kind of following your. Hello Zoom man? Any public comments? If so, you may unmute yourself.
I think. Okay. Hi, everybody, it's time to introduce myself. I know I've been to the meeting before, but my name is Pranita Gamson. And I'm the executive director of Nevada County Cannabis Alliance. And we are a trade association representing our local legal licensed cannabis industry. And our mission and the values of our organization are craft cannabis starting, environmental stewardship, and industry responsibility. And we provide education as well as advocacy to our local cannabis industry. And I just wanted to let everybody know that here is a resource here if there are issues within neighborhoods or anything. Just to feel free to approach and have any questions.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you, Diana.
Oh, I was just asking, you know me, I never went to school, so this don't mean nothing to me. Just tell me in English. I want to announce my party for convoy Christmas this year. It's going to be big and special. And I usually have over 300 people and 100 kids. I have a sneaky hunt, we're going to be way. I'm having a special guest coming for my convoy Christmas. Robbie James and Miss Streets of Bakersfield.
Wow.
Are going to be there in the bathroom of John Cash.
Wow.
They're doing that for me as a favor.
Wow.
So it's free, you know me, everything is free. And the more people that come, the more people enjoy Penn Valley and the community. And I love, this will be my 19th year here at Penn Valley doing this. It's on Saturday after Thanksgiving, which is that way every year, and I don't compete with Nevada City and Grass Valley. And so it will be the 26th of October.
20th of November.
I mean, November. How about that?
And of course, I'm going to go association and community foundation that's happy to help the community.
Yeah.
Thank you, Glass.
It should be fun, it's going to be big.
Every third guest off their phone is for that one.
They're just playing Western folks, that's all. Great music.
Awesome. Okay, hi, yeah, thank you.
No, I'm here to hear what Sue had to say.
Yeah.
And now that I've just generated into the doll. I want to find out what she did.
Or at least with her office. All right, well, if that's again a public comment, anybody in Zoom land wanting to make comments? If not, we can go ahead and just, I would like to.
Just, I, as a new member of the MAC, I'm really happy to be here. And I also can be a resource for any questions regarding cannabis. I've been resident here for over 10 years and have a legal firm. And so I also can be a resource for questions and concerns because as a legal firm, I also have a lot to say about your legal firms.
Do you have a legal firm?
I could, my family.
I'm an academic, get us it all.
Okay. Well, if there's no other public comment, we'll go ahead and move forward with our presentation from the Nevada County's Cannabis ordinance information with Jeff Merriman. And Thomas is here and Brian Paul is here. Take it away, guys.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Thanks, thanks to you all. My name is Brian Paul, I'm running the.
That's great, I'm sorry.
And with me Jeff Merriman, the director of the Cannabis Compliance, one of our senior compliance officers, Colin Malloy. And we're going to give you a little presentation on kind of the. What we're going to cover tonight is just a general overview of the existing ordinance and the existing process for permanent cannabis operations. Speak a little bit about all that application process looks like and what camera departments are involved in and what's required of someone to have a legal operation. We are in the midst of looking at making some changes to the cannabis ordinance currently. And I'll go over some of those at a high level of what's in the process. And then I'm going to turn it over to Jeff and maybe Thomas to talk about the kind of the after the fact once a farm is permitted and annual permit process, as well as the inspection and enforcement process. And then they're also going to touch on the taxes and the revenues that come out of this program. And then of course, we'll be open for any questions. So with that.
Sorry, I had a question.
Who do you work for?
Nevada County.
Do you work for Nevada County?
I do.
Fire department?
Yes, I am.
Safety department, anything?
So the existing ordinance that's in place right now allows four cannabis cultivation for growing cannabis in three southern districts currently, an ag, general act, which will be agriculture exclusive, which is A and Forest, which is the IR zone. There's different tiers of sizes that are allowed based on your parcel size. So anything between even under two acres is not allowed. Anything between zero to 4.9 is a 500 square feet of cannabis candy. Five to 9.99 acres allows 10,500 square feet of candy. And it should mention that candy can be, the plants can be indoor, they can be in, or a mixed life, or the hoop hours, and then they can also be alcohol. But the square footage of the candy is the same regardless of it's indoor, alcohol, mixed life.
Ryan, can you break that down just a little bit for the people that aren't familiar with it? About how many plants would that be in a candy?
Well, these people can actually enter, I don't know exactly how many plants, depends on size.
There's a lot of different grown styles. So some people, they grow smaller plants and they grow their plants, but it cannot exceed that square footage, which is, you know, a mass, a quarter acre.
So it's not by the plant, like some of the candies are all, it's just the square footage, okay?
So you can see the breakdown as the parcel size gets larger, the candy sizes are allowed to be larger. 10 to 19.99 acres is high probably square feet. And then 20 acres and larger is 10,000 square feet. It's the current, the maximum candy size that's allowed within these zone districts on parcels of that size. So that's kind of the general parameters. Our code contains a number of requirements that are required to be submitted in order to be renewed and eventually receive a permit. The canopy sizes between 2,500 square feet and 10,000 square feet to permitting processes. The first one is administrative development permitting process. This comes in through the planning department. We require site plans and just the overall operation showing where the plants are going to go, the structures. We look for access, we look for setbacks to property lines, to environmental resources. Sometimes those applications require environmental studies and management plans, we call them. If they're removing oak trees or encroaching waterways, those are sensitive resources that are protected, ag lands as well as steep slopes. Those are distributed to a number of county departments, including cannabis, public works, environmental health, planning department, building department, fire department, could be some other state agencies, fish and wildlife. There's resources involved. Those agencies and departments review the proposed plans and the application and provide comments back to the planning department that are compiled and given back to the applicant within the first three days. And if all the information is there, then it's ready to potentially be approved. Most often, we will ask for additional information or clarification. So a letter is sent out to the applicants requesting clarification or additional information on site plan or their security plan or their operation plan, et cetera. And that process can go back and forth until we get all the information and to ensure that it's consistent with all the codes that are required of the adopted ordinance. And once the application is deemed complete, again, it's a 30 day cycle. And if it meets all the standards and we have all the correct information, we will issue a provisional approval. And that will outline the conditions of approval that the operation must comply with, the life of the, of the operation. And that's ongoing annual inspections that Jeff and Thomas will talk about. And there's just ensuring that the consistency of the, of the site plan and the proposed operation. And that's essentially the front end of the permitting process and that's sort of.
Sorry, somebody was waiting to get that and then it's.
One more back. Perfect. There you go. It is a very similar process. The only real difference is the vision for the smaller 2,500 square feet or less. And they go kind of through the building department or basically directly through the cannabis department. But they do the same routing around to the same departments, departments provide comments based on the purview of the departments, environmental health, or septic, so sorry, septic setbacks as well as valve setbacks. And fires looking at access and fire safety issues. And again, that's, that's routed around providing comments. And if and when it meets all the standards and has all the appropriate supporting environmental documents, then a county permit is issued, a CCP we call it, or a cannabis permit is issued. Next. So currently, this is kind of an overview of some of the amendments to the ordinance that we are looking at. And we'll tell you where we are in the process, try to cover them briefly. Currently, the, the code specifies that it's with medical use only. We're looking at allowing adult slash recreation mode in addition to medical use. We're looking to combine the CCP and the EBT process, which is more just an internal process. I can mention they're very similar and we're looking just a little bit more consistently. So consistently, since we asked for basically the same thing, just the same process, it's just streamlined the process. We are looking at potentially adding additional license types, not just cultivation, but allowing some distribution for moving product off the site, moving farms, as well as some non-volatile manufacturing. There's a difference between volatile and non-volatile. This is the, you know, less dangerous, less involved, different types of hazardous types of equipment and materials. And then divisions of retail sales on certain sites, but that will be a different process. It will require a use permit, which would be an inspectionary process. It would require a public notice. The allow, the canopy size in addition to canopy permitting ordinance, there's an allow for support area for equipment, processing for drawing. It's 90% of your canopy size is allowed. And so it will be an app that potentially allows in that support area to be used for additional canopy. The idea is that we've identified kind of a certain square footage of a box that could be disturbed on the property. Since we're not going outside of the overall box size that was previously approved with cannabis, but allowances are shipped between support area and canopy area within that same footprint.
So it's kind of like the building, right, same principle.
Yeah.
And also it fits within the environmental impact review that was, you know, before the ordinance.
Right, that's, that's the, one of the main kind of limiting factors is of the relevant having to go back and do a whole environmental view of something with that disturbing stuff. We're also looking at allowing adjacent properties that are under the same ownership or control to be counted as the total square footage currently. Each property has a residence in order to take advantage of the maximum canopy size.
What, Tom, can you put that in your English? I got, I got three different parcels with one building.
Yep. Yeah, we're looking at.
And they're growing on all three parcels.
Yeah, well, you can grow on all three parcels currently. It's just that you're limited to your largest parcel size equivalent for the canopy. So it's a lot of the issues that we run into are additional grading disturbance and just putting manufacturing homes on property in order to maximize growth sizes. And so while with allowing the adjacent contiguous properties to be used to maximize the sizes, they can be more concentrated and they can be less disturbance with. Disturbance for driveways, how those access roads that.
And it keeps people from trying to divide their parcels up into small 20 foot parcels, for example, but yeah. So Ryan, just to clarify that, that subject, if I can see, this is a little bit disturbing to some people. But my understanding from going to the meetings that we had at the Contractors Association and things Jeff was there also, was that the reason why the county was moving towards allowing an aggregate was because that way the cultivation will be more centered in the body of all the parcels together and would be less disturbance and less odor and things to the neighbors, am I correct?
Yeah. Touching around.
Okay.
Next slide.
Let's put it in layman's terms, yeah.
And so it goes kind of allowing of your parcel size and you move on site areas and its requirement are kind of interwoven so that people aren't just trying to, you know, move cheap housing onto the site and cause more disturbance. We're also adding some parking requirements that we have a policy in the law, but this is just formalizing them. And I was going to talk about setbacks. Looking at increasing setbacks for the larger parcels, for the larger canopy sizes on. I'll start with sensitive sites. The current ordinance is 1,000 feet, the state requirements are 600 feet from sensitive sites. So we're looking at and analyzing, making that consistent with state requirements, 600 feet. Keeping the 100 foot property line, 100 feet from the property line for up to 10,000 square feet of canopy. But increasing it to 150 feet for 10 to 20,000 square feet of canopy. And increase it to 200 feet or over 20,000 square feet of canopy. And then the reduced setbacks for internal property lines. So if you've got two or three parcels that are contiguous with one another, the idea is to lessen or remove those setbacks so that the grow can be located in the supported, can be located in the more central. And hopefully further away from neighbors that are not in the vicinity of the issue. And then so I'm just touching on where we're at right now. We did post the red line version of the draft railings, which is online, Teresa has, has it?
It's on there.
I didn't. So it's on our. And there's a clean version as well, we're going to see the chin, the red lines and offsets and everything. But the red line show you what's been modified. We're looking to receive comments until the doctor looks dead. And in the meantime, we'll have our environmental consultant to prepare an addendum to the environmental impact report that analyzes the potential changes to the ordinance. And this is kind of a repeat, but all the things that the environmental impact addendum, impact report addendum we're looking at will be those additional license types, the modification to the setbacks, the adjacent parcel issue and the removal of the onsite residence environment. And of course, the odor issue and visibility that those are concerns that we're looking at. And all that, all these things may affect increase, decrease, and not affect these types of issues. They're working through public hearings to consider the changes before the planning. We don't have a date yet, but it's coming up possibly by the end of this year. And the planning commission will make recommendations to the board supervisors and the board supervising for appeal to the board going to, whether or not to approve all summer, you know, a mixture of the proposed changes or the direction toward. So we're kind of at the, you know, rollout stage, providing information and gathering comments and doing some of the analysis. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
Okay, that's my school question. So one of the questions, I know I get a lot, and I've had citizens calling me prior to this meeting. And one of the questions they really have that I just, they're planning, is probably the right place to address is there's a, people are calling and asking me, why do, why am I not notified? That my client is, or that my neighbor is, is applying for this. And so if you could just address why it's not public notice type thing.
Because it's an administrative permit. We notice for only discretionary projects that require a public hearing and decision maker. An administrative project is completely that, we meet the standards, it's like self power division, daycare. There's a number of small home businesses, we don't notify administrator because we're personally describing. That's applied, if you meet the standards, you get the permit. So there's no input from the neighborhood or that would need to go to the decision maker to make the decision. So that's, that's consistent with all.
Maybe if you were going to apply for like a commercial kitchen type application with this to be processed, would the neighbors be notified or?
No, they're doing the retail sales potentially.
Retail triggers that, okay.
I'm sorry, Teresa, what did you ask him?
I asked him if it was like a commercial kitchen because like a lot of the cannabis businesses locally will be things like sabs or scrubs or lotion and things like that that are kind of made in a kitchen. So that's what I was asking. But what he's saying is the only time that's really triggered is if it relates to retail typically, typically. Not always, but typically.
Yeah, I mean, that's the way it goes. Right now, we do not have a use permit allowance to be able to allow retail sales. Proposals, that will add that permit type.
Okay.
So it's a counter position that there's no reason to notify neighbors that they're going to do this.
Right, because it's consistent with our administrative permitting process for all other types of land uses that are similar to this.
Do you see, do you see what's wrong with that in so many different ways? The loss of property value decreasing, the ordinances not being met. The water. We don't, we don't have too much going on. All we know that I got this 10,000 foot building that reached up straight across from my balcony. That used to be a real nice metal. Okay, I haven't even got into finding out who did the testing to tell me they got enough water to support this issue. Because I know where my well is, which is only as a crow fly, 300 yards away.
My problem is.
So, so, so we're, we're, I mean, I don't want to say what happens on my road and my community. And that's, that's absolutely wrong. So I don't want to feed up on you. I need to know who your boss is so I can go feed up on you.
Yeah, Nevada County. I had to pay $20,000. I'm going to yell, I had to pay $20,000.
You're going to go up in front of me.
I don't, I don't get my letter.
All right, I'll shut up. I'm already just go, go ahead.
I had to pay $20,000 and notify 18 neighbors that I was going to draw a F line down my property because I have 32 acres and I'm 90 years old and I've been with this since the 40s. And I just wanted to put a thing there so in case I die, my kids will never be able to go to Nevada County and try to get a line down there. It would cost them forever and ever. And that's really caused me to draw a line down there. And then I had to notify the 18 neighbors so that they can say if it's okay for me to draw a line, no ready, no nothing, no movement. I just create line down my property. 18,000. And these people couldn't wait for 30 days and I wonder, oh wow, what are they doing? Found out they didn't even have the permit being by me. I'm old and grown and complaining and getting nowhere. And yet nobody has to tell anybody that they're going to grow all this stuff around their property.
Just to clarify, Gladys did a lot split on her property, so.
What's that?
Just to clarify, that was actually a lot split.
Yeah, lots good, that's what it is, right, a line, lots of, to me, draw a line, I'm sorry, I didn't.
You remember, Brian?
What, the lot line? Yeah, $18,000 and 18 neighbors to let know. Well, why would you not approve it? It was a simple, a simple piece of shit to do. I did the world's largest subdivision in the world for six months and didn't know people were going to be.
Good evening, we're turning through this slowly and do you hear the end? So in addition to the, to the ladies and gentlemen, process, the Brian is correct, there's also the annual conference. This is the best way to.
Uh this is the, the best way to think about this, like a business license, the annual permit that's renewed each year, uh maintained throughout the year. This is managed uh almost entirely by the cannabis department, so it's all like. Uh for example, uh proves these all the pounds and inspection all these. Uh for the third permit and really subsequent permits at a certain point. Uh typically what will happen is we'll say, you know, Tom's gonna go out on the site that was just approved. So he's gonna look at the planning conditions uh were created during that land use review. Uh to see if they need to do anything before they're allowed to cultivate, or it's out on site. Obtaining other type of permits, et cetera. Uh so that's kind of the pre-inspection review. Just because they have a lay use entitlement doesn't mean cultivated until you have an annual in this permit. So this is like kind of a secondary uh permit that's required. Uh this, this involved an onsite inspection, so once that initial review is done, to make sure that they had everything in place. And inspection schedule, cultivator to go out, to meet them onsite, they look at the site plan, make sure everything's where it should be. Make sure the operation is exactly how it should be, uh if at that time, anything is wrong, that is not approved, there is, is not approved. So there's a direction that they need to do and hopefully they can do it, you know, in a short period of time and get back out when they inspect.
Yeah, can you say, can you just kind of mention what kinds of items are you disputing over, like chemicals, um? Too many people living there, not enough housing, da da da.
I can talk about candy supplies I work under, we have two additional staff members that I work with. So I will go out and say I'll do the annual canvas inspection, what that is, the visual approval like you was mentioning. That felt long, there was a requirement that needed sixteen, twenty plus conditions they have to meet. I ensure onsite that those are met and then also the site plan, how the applicant proposes that they're going to run their operations. Now, I ensure that the site is consistent with what they propose and what they. But I want to mention even more this annual parent is permitted. This, these sites also have a state license, uh with the P P P, there's a cannabis control. They also are permitted with the state water board, they're also permitted with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. They also get annual inspections, they did an inspection by the agency, they get annual inspections by myself. Uh any of the agents that they chief to or pod and our agricultural minister in office, they go out and pesticide and uh weight from that. These, these regulations permit cannabis sites have a series of uh regulators throughout the season that they will need inspection.
How, how often do you audit them?
Excuse me?
How often, often do you audit them?
Uh yearly and then if needed more, and we'll do more, more inspections here, we do a free population.
So my, my understanding is they have that permit, they have to ask, answer for. Every drop of water and every gram of chemical they use, is that correct?
So we do have uh our I department does crack their pesticides that we're using and you know, this product is consumed. Through uh permitted dispensaries, so it's tested, so no uh volatile chemicals, no volatile um. Pesticides, these are all, these are all the.
Have you gone down to the end of John Warren and looked through two dead, dead properties, guys watch away from?
Uh there's this number of parcels going on.
Past your bit on to. Um it's way out, it's way out of the end where it's all, and drops down to the reservoir.
There's multiple sites out there that are permitted and unpermitted, and so I don't want to mix and confuse those. We did uh wintering ground in the Donwell inspection as early as this one, so. I don't know what you're speaking of specifically, but we are out there, we're in that area and. Um multiple, in in the acts of two, so we all those inspection leaders listed from all of the departments, also. So I goes out those initial inspections on pesticides, just like a still go randomly, uh we use scale testing. Uh check the inspections or pesticide again, so there, there are a lot of eyes on these sites at all over time of the year. Making sure they're very, so if they're not, if we gotta get ready to inspect it, when we, they're probably outside their law can be. Or they're doing something that shouldn't be, we address it uh typically as an enforcement case, I mean unless they get into compliance quickly. Uh if they don't comply to certain point, it's possibly noticed to evade, and we're going out there making sure that cannabis is cut.
Okay. I'm not gonna challenge you that you're not doing your job, I'm just questioning how it gets done.
So then also the problem is, is uh the annual payment permit. This can be revoked at any time, we can, we don't need to issue this every year, even if they have a requirement. But this permit is what they need and we'll ensure our team will ensure that everything is onsite immediately. If we receive a complaint from both, we'll go out, that applicant to the other committed site. We'll tell them, we're coming, we will show up and we'll do the inspection.
Okay. Let's stay on a complaint from the public, let's say that, that my neighbor has a real health problem. And the odor is, is, is detrimental to his health. Can we go back, you would say they need to put some type of air scrubber on it?
So what if our orders, we do require or any more cultivation, we require a control, um. With the other types of cultivation sound, we will visit those applicants on a complaint. And make suggestions and work with the applicant to uh mitigate those and the order inside of mitigation go within. And that other controls are due.
Cause that's what they're doing in Santa Barbara, trying to get it off the bus and 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 reducing the emissions from it. And and I can't believe the air quality that's to get away with, that's the other thing.
Well, that's to be honest, I mean, the reason we started so small and slow to be friends is because we didn't want to. Santa Barbara now has a huge. So we are, we are ninety. So I understand why we will be upset with. Uh but that's, that's what we tried to avoid by going with the environmental report, creating better kind of process and. You know, starting small craft, you know, that's, that's what we're doing.
Can I say what I do for my smell, cause I can't stand the smell, when I was ten years old. I used to be in boxing and we had these great big fans, I have three of them. And I ran the courts all the way down the property, seventy-five feet to the property line in July and blew. Smell back to them.
Kind of like a cattle barn.
It helped a little bit because you can't sit on my pad anymore.
Kind of like a cattle barn, yeah, because they had those big huge commercial fans and all the cattle barns.
They usually in boxing, we usually turn boxes, because no matter how. So we could say fans on them, and I have carry.
I like that cattle barn, just cattle barn, cattle, cattle.
So I think this slide, this next slide will be.
I'm sorry?
So I think this next slide, my trivia, I'll give them a.
We'll see.
So, so more than this, people ask, uh you know, it's a more priority, you know, the two pieces, but. And enforcement, right, because you can't have one.
Okay.
Uh enforcement, as we all know, uh Melissa Candace's mission, Nevada County, the goddess. So we made a lot of strides here with enforcement to try to get around on that. Uh we are now working with the sheriffs directly uh on a weekly basis, doing large scale operations, daily inspections, you know. Uh operations with, with the water board and fish wildlife, on egregious grows, on growth impact neighbors and neighborhoods. Uh we, with the board's approval uh in January, we are now proactive, uh we were still. Uh reacting to the plate, we're still facing plans and addressing those. But we also now are allowed to approach um approaches that you provide. So what we're looking at is egregious grows, plant impact areas, you know, resident house users, neighbors that are close to their homes. Um and we've been very good this year, we had a lot of cases that we've done properly. Uh in addition to supporting our, our permit, the people who've gone through the process, because it's unfair for them, they. Spend all this time and money, pay taxes and can't do the right thing to be surrounded by people who are not paying taxes, who are not. They don't care, they don't care, uh so that's another focus to try to do. We also have additional staff, um for the cannabis division, the local press, we have some more staff now. To do project enforcement, working with the sheriff and respond to complaints and uh as well as. Uh earlier this year, modified our industry enforcement warrants, that's the order to be, pretty much work out of um for enforcement. So we bolstered quite a few things in that, um we got rid of the five day window that you had to evade cannabis for illegal grower. Uh before the ordinance modifications, when we contacted you, you had a five day grace period before you got to get any compliance. Really didn't take a lot of sense, um you know, there's a lot of issues with this, um but the board uh approved removing it. That's been a huge help for us, uh enforcement action is swift, there's penalties involved, everyone has gotten out, that's the day we're there. It's day one tendencies, so there's no reason to wait and try to harvest anymore, penalty you're acting of day one. And that's been very effective, uh another tool that's been extremely effective this year, uh so we need to know about this is the drone. So in uh, in April, uh this, this program went live, we have a pilot program for our drone. Uh the current policy right now is that we, we fly from right away, so if we had a complaint that comes in. We still go through our normal process to try and see it from the road or see it from maybe a different uh angle. Uh but if we can't see the grow, we have suspicions there, uh if we smell or if it's fancy or we can see uh previous aerial imagery. Uh we then use the drone tool to fly it to four hundred feet from the right away. Uh let's say hundred percent of the time, we can see what we need to see, whether it's a greenhouse, grow. Uh and we use that tool to, to get enforcement sort of that out for. Uh I'd say this has been a ninety difference for the program, last year. We ran into so many fences, so many, you know, just a pottery issues and bushes to where. We knew there's a vast greenhouse, there's nothing to do though. Uh because our ordinance required to section visually see the canvas to proceed. The drone changes at four hundred feet, you can see a lot, that's really. Uh it has zoom capability, you can take the photos, you know, zoomed in from, you know, a hundred meters away, but. Uh so that's been great, um in addition to that, we discussed uh the penalties now are immediate, so day one of the new offer and finding violation. Your authority to get your allowance for that day, so that's been the danger for two, because people obviously can't do the calculation anymore, well. How long do I have to harvest and is it worth it and this is money, um you know, that's for the most part, you know what I mean? And then lastly, the state operation's been viewed, we fly a couple of water board several times a year. Um fishing wildlife, we do warrants with them, um we, we have really good relationship. Uh relationship with our state partners, which is a big plus feedback. So one thing that in your community recently, that's even with this new toolbox that we're about, we were with uh. The new ordinance that the board approved. We targeted an area that was um just editing parts of the whole thing down off of system, not being the, the road. I think we did six evasions in two weeks and that whole street is now a great campus. So we'll choose somewhere and we'll work to uh actively get those uh people to move that out from their community. Um and then it'd be, you know, we will work with these other agencies. And I think we have a slide later that I'll comment, but we have some recent actions with uh sheriff's office. State water board, fish and wildlife, department of shelters and cannabis compliance. And we've done four flights this season, they're coming along.
Can you, can you tell me that one that's going up across from my house, whether he's gonna be able to use that pond or recyclable water? With the chemicals?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't know where you live, so I don't.
You, when you went out to, when you went out to uh the end, in the John Warren, you passed it on the right. And big excavation area.
Okay, the, the new drive, the road, I know that's on there. My hall is none of that.
I'm sorry?
No use of any of those surface waters, proposal by applicant, it's my hall.
Okay, cause that's what I was told, and there's a pond there.
Yeah, and uh we have a person in our community that stays in and persists in contact with me. Uh on that site, so we have discussions constantly about that. Fully aware of it.
Okay. What, how many legal grows are there in the county and how many illegal grows?
Well, I have two hundred and nine legal.
Legal?
Legal, that would be snacks that have uh been issued conditional approval. And have the easy fees issued and haven't inspected. So we do have other projects that have conditional approval, those projects have either not started development. Uh maybe waiting, maybe just waiting or uh everything other, you know. The news, there's people working, you know, the times and whatnot, so that number's higher, but as I just said, they're not approved. Until they have the CD and all those conditional.
What's the penalty for an illegal grower if they get caught?
So with the new tool, uh for approved new organs, use each violation of our cannabis ordinance is one thousand dollars a day. So that's every violation, so we write penalties for unpermitted cancers. Cameras of unpermitted group houses, unpermitted grading, setback violations, whatever those are. And we will issue penalties and each one of those violations is one thousand dollars. And then we work out the uh building code section, first day violation to building code violation is one thirty, second day is seven hundred. Third day is thirteen hundred, so the initial felony is significant, second is warned and the third is uh, you know. It, it, it encourages them to contact us and point to what we don't expect of us.
Do these penalties result in a lien on the property?
That is a possibility also.
Possibility?
Yeah, we have a ability and we can go on map pool or put them on a map. We have many tools this season, the vertical, we have always had. You know, report documents that are found, they try to sell parts of the file reports, bringing them out of them one. We try to cover all those bases.
Okay, well, you need to tell my mic out tomorrow, I'll turn it to you.
I'll give you my card before we leave, we might be talking all.
Whether you walk with state and I'll be bringing you there.
Correct, so these sites, they'll be detected by the state water board and by fish and wildlife. The site that I mentioned earlier that we did, and I'll start on now, we did um two surfboards in one day with the agencies I referenced earlier. And we uh abated, I think approximately sixteen thousand cannabis plants in one day. With uh four states. All working here, we did all of it.
I heard you say two hundred and nine legal, how many illegal?
Well, there's less now.
Yeah. Well, we've been doing this talk, this program now, this is our, end of our fourth meeting, I believe. Um and we've been doing this every year, and so uh left month every year and then. Knowing that we have a school toolbox, people aren't starting up or they're not uh being as egregious as they want.
Brian, does the county publish the legal versus the illegal number, cause he's not telling me.
No, you're looking for a number, so in two thousand nineteen, I think we. We actually scanned uh Google or Google images, uh which I think was maybe a year or two previous uh. And trying to get some kind of idea of how many of the grows are, obviously there's some issues with that, there's gonna be some indoor rows and some rows that are in. You know, structures and new houses that you can't really tell on scanners, you know, the number we got back then was approximately three thousand. Uh but that was a long time ago, like Thomas is saying, when anything was changed.
And the last time you checked that was in twenty nineteen?
Yeah, we had to check it, it was a lot of time, so literally go through the entire county. One quarter to another quarter, not every single row, uh so we don't have an updated number for you, uh we know it's a lot from that at this point. Uh it's, it's, it's. Significantly less, I will say, just uh because of our program and enforcement beginning. The people we have, we have run out and checked on sites that were previously. Don't just say I have one site in two thousand nineteen that I actually uh. What would be the owner today, so those sites aren't restarting, you know, we knock them out and then no. You know, we knock them out and then know that they are in a. Uh, uh, not a great location, somewhere qualified, those guys aren't starting up because they were. Word spreads quickly, um, they often refer to the same council, so. We have people that culminate for two thousand nineteen, twenty, that just aren't there this year.
What, what was the number in twenty nineteen that you?
Approximately three thousand.
Three thousand?
And I, I have another add just a bit of context on that, which is that the cannabis industry, the county has been exceptional with enforcement. Uh, this year is, you know, word is definitely spread, a lot of people are no longer, uh, growing, um. But the other factor that we have to talk about is the cannabis industry is completely changing. Uh, the price per pound is probably ninety, eighty, been ninety percent down. From where it was three years ago, two years ago, it is so low that what we will find in our community moving forward. That those that are actually cultivating are those that are. Here to be licensed, be part of the community, are part of the community. So we're seeing a, a attrition. A loss of our cannabis farm to a degree that we have never seen before. And it is going to impact all levels of our community.
You're missing, you're missing the point. The point was when we had small, pretty. Small border, critical plants, we're gonna have a fall. Now we got six thousand plants, we gotta fall. Because here's a question for you, tell me if I'm right wrong. Hundred fifty plants, three hundred fifty gallons of water a day?
Um, so UC Berkeley has done a bunch of studies on, I don't know if we have the stats on what.
Yeah.
You have?
No, that was since.
Is that ballpark? This one, go ahead.
UC Berkeley has done several studies for past two, past two years related cannabis use and water. I can share those, depending on the map, it's to be shared with the member. What the study is showing is that to grow a cannabis, grow cannabis, there's no, it is, it is the same exact water usage. As growing a tomato. Cannabis is not a water, it's a problem, it's what the problem is. Cannabis is, is timed with water, it's irrigation.
I understand how we irritate here.
Yeah, so it's same as a, as a tomato plant. So when we're looking at impacts. That it is estimated that, uh, in the past year. The approved legal cannabis grows was probably about eighteen acres in our entire county. Legal cannabis grows, eighteen acres. The number, and this is according to our proper court, of harvested of crop, traditional crop, agricultural land, crop. Three thousand three hundred acres. So we have to, when we're approaching cannabis and water usage in the conversation, it's just really important to. That we're all using the same set of facts that relates to water use in your town.
So back to back to my original statement, is, am I in the ballpark? Cause I know what it takes to get a real my, my garden, and what I use in my garden. Okay, on my raised beds. And everybody I've talked to says hundred fifty plants, three hundred fifty gallons of water a day.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the exact, I can't read the exact.
Okay, so if you, if you've got, if you've got five thousand plants, do the math. Where's the water coming from? Let's bring you back to my first question. Who determines that there's sufficient water to issue that permit to begin with?
We don't regulate groundwater use.
What?
We don't regulate groundwater, we don't regulate water.
You don't regulate, so Peterson Plumbing. Is backed up with two hundred wells that have gone dry, which are trying to dig, deal, drill. For people so they can have water in their house. And the county, God bless you. Is only contributing to the problem. I'm sorry, you're not going to convince me of anything else.
Okay, so part of the other aspect of the, uh, the cannabis priority is tax, right? It's ready, it's being able to create a sustainable program that funds itself, uh, and is, you know, funded. Long term, but you know, uh. We run into some issues with the current taxes, but all of these, so we, we have a grocery seeds law. Uh, which is based on, you know, how much you sell, um, based on the current tax. Uh, there are some issues with that, there, there is another model out there that we're looking at, which is square footage models, a little simpler. Um, for not only county staff, but for. You know, I guess expectations from a cultivator as well, and knowing what you're going to hope each year. Uh, it, it's simple, it's just basically a calculation of, you know, baseball beat time of attack creators. Typically, there's a different rate for outbursts, mixed life versus indoor. Uh, and so this is something that basically is going to go to the board to decide, this is our decision, we're just. Going to show, uh, the pros and cons of each. Uh, our, uh, Tina Burton, our tax collector, who has been in lines and some other community members. Let's kind of look at both sides and it'll be up to the board to decide, but. Um, some counties, some other counties are doing the same thing. Some are going to the square footage to grocery seeds, so spend a mixture of what's going on in the industry right now. But from the people we talked to, the majority of them find a square footage model, it is, is a lot easier for them to build. It's a lot easier for the tax collector, uh, and, and just knowing the expectations upfront. Uh, it's just, it does create some problems for cultivators, and so there, like I said, there are pros and cons. If you haven't sold a product yet, are you going to pay the taxes, right? So that's something we have to, we have to look at, uh.
Who's paying taxes?
All permitted growers.
They're all paying tax? They don't have, I thought in the state of California, you could have a banking account. Or they're paying taxes?
To the tax collector.
Based on X number of plants?
You, you can get a banking account, if you get a banking account, they're, they're, they're based on the legal cannabis.
So right, so, so what I said earlier is right now it's based on grocery seeds, so it's, you know, what you sell is the tax. Out of tax, so, so the other option that will be before the board is a square footage model, which is what you just kind of mentioned is. How many square feet do you have times what the rate is, that's what it is. Uh, so if the board had decided on that, uh, probably around the same time that, you know, Ryan and the county bring some other obligations for it.
So are you thinking on that, and so the next taxes, that's our, something to play?
No, it's really just kind of trying to time it up with all the other stuff, so that it's not, you know, like it's multiple things, it's kind of a one. You know, one decision, uh, should have, uh, just makes sense to have all teams at the same time. Uh, dual statements, I just wanted to mention one thing, uh, the State Water Board requires a lot of scans permitted in our, our, although. This department also re-reviews well placed facilitation to the cannabis area. And, um, is it a permitted legal?
Is it permitted water?
It is, we bill the elements of permitted legal water.
That didn't happen right there.
It's happened since our program.
I, I beat up on Rich Johansson and N I P for six months to get him to stop moving. To stop letting the water trucks go back.
Well, we're talking about groundwater and I agree, and I do not have about the water truck delivery, nor will we.
But they are monitoring that, am I am?
No, not true.
Well, and, and I P does have plans to, uh, possibly better monitor, they're, they're waiting for. The governor that call in the next level, if you're out, and they're buying all licensing the water trucks and having a sticker program.
There's the pot food, yes.
Yeah, you're still on John Moore, the bottom of box. Yeah, it's a more distinguished in the seventh block. Permitted versus uncommitted, water theft, water use is totally a good story. The permits that Thomas and Brian mentioned goes through plan review, goes through the water board, this is. Reviewed and approved by state agencies, local agencies. Unpermitted is the wild us. Those that take care of these unpermitted guys, so we don't have to worry about them regularly.
And that's true too.
Cause they're, they're a lot of water without those requirements.
I can beat up the new guy, I'm just frustrated. What's the county, and, and not you individually, just the overall, how, how it's run? I mean, it's great for cattle, but not for fixed crops, it just doesn't work. And so.
So we'll show you, we have a few pictures, we're just going to decide this to that point. Uh, the difference between unpermitted sites and permitted sites, and Thomas can speak to this a better night, and you can see it out here. Uh, but it's. Yeah, it's a, this guy is, uh. It's a two different sites, and we both agree, the one is the, the grading, this is the permitted grading. This is our, our, uh, compliance officer, uh, we got to step in for scale, because we were going to install, you couldn't tell. Uh, this has been your community, this is only one community, this was an action that State Water Board, Fish and Wildlife Department just. And sure. Uh, so. This site actually are in contact with property owners that lease property, uh, and. He's making steps towards compliance, so we do not only evade free cannabis. We do not only follow the cannabis review. When this site is done, the boot houses will be removed, the grading will be corrected. All trapped debris will return to vacant land. So we, we don't evade cannabis in a lawful way, and we need a, a fire hazard or, you know, something in the community. We need a little office sliding, setting, creating, you know, seasonal ranges. So our role is only to address the cannabis that day. We literally work for months and up to years to correct these sites, we don't just walk away.
And I want to have the, the legal partners have to have state and, uh, local county bonds. To, in order to, if anything happens, to put the land back to the, the original state. So we, we carry bonds for this.
Well, it's going to be interesting to see how you guys could have done up here in the John Moore.
Yeah, we're here, and that's not good for John Moore, this is more of a. All the way down.
So that was a big piece of equipment that moved all that dirt. I mean, was it a licensed contractor who did it for, or was it just the core? I mean, somebody had a, a D ten or something.
Correct, well, our goal today is to not be a licensed contractor, or a senior, there's a, there's a situation also.
Swift, are you even working with the Contractors Association about this type of thing?
I, I've never been outside of. Cause we, we'll catch, we'll go to sites before they're even really up and running, we'll, we'll catch them integrating situations. I've never come across a, a licensed contractor integrated, actually, like, no. This, this is, but I mean, they're, they're, they were just. So, uh, but yeah, the, the toll of that is the largest. Grading project, permitted or unpermitted, uh, I have heard.
That picture that you had there, they cut away, uh, the side of a hill.
Correct, and then, uh, then there's the sweet house, you can see, there's another one that would be behind you. And there's two matching, and then about eighty foot slope to the. See the little thing? So, and when this is, uh, this is what Dr. Lee. Multiple colonies of, uh, big wall that could, along with the.
How many employees at the county are involved in the cannabis licensing and enforcement and all that?
All CDA. Everybody in CDA, so we have a building division, we have a plant.
How many is that?
Well, the staff member will look at it, of one staff member from each agency within our division.
We are on forty.
Forty? Do the, the license fees pay for the effort?
Yeah, where were you chucking?
Is it a profit center?
No, it's, it covers our costs and our time. So, you know, it's, it's calculated that pay for salaries and overhead and, and all that. And, uh, we take it in initial fees and then charge hourly, so if we go over the, the fee, then invoices start going now. Half the hour is charged to the cannabis, our, our, when the fire, any department in touch with it will bill directly.
Wait, but your department is neutral as far as revenue versus cost?
Right, our fees are built on what it takes to pay employees, pay benefits, keep the lights on.
Thank you.
So the flip side to this, uh, which, yeah, so the, the, this is what our program, you know, looks like, or what we strive for. So you saw the pictures I told you stories. Um, you know, the goal actually was. Brian's team, the viewer, and the final approval is for you not to do this. Um, you know, you may, people may think something's going on, but they're often in places, they're, they're clean, they're quiet. The, like, these green officers, uh, fans, Brian theme requires, uh, noise study. Make sure that we don't have any sound countertop and disturbing neighbors. Uh, part of the review, uh, is trips, vehicle trip per day, living those trips per day, so you don't see a lot of traffic coming in the building. You know, we even permit with our, in the homework department, like in provisions, like make sure. The government of the phone is correct, we, uh, impact fees to keep our, our county where this is going, like. We don't regulate in these sites. It's different than, I think, what you've seen or, or, uh, have experienced.
Okay.
Um, so any questions we did not answer or?
Everybody having these meetings with our children come to me?
With your children?
Yeah, children, they're eight, nine, ten, you're. Yeah, that's sad. I won't be here when I see the kids saying, my God, where are they saying pot is bad for us? We can smoke pot, we can do it, they're growing drugs all around us, I went through this in the forties, I know what I'm talking about. Huh? And what happened in the seventies that they hate Ashville? All I'm saying is that at ninety years old, I got great grandkids, grandkids. And I'm hoping that the kids around here, because I pick up so much pot every day at the shopping center from kids. That say, they're growing and what around here can't be that bad. But they don't know that each person's system is different. When I was eleven and they said, you want to smoke pot, I said, no, I'm better than them. But some kids went on to that and they went on to something else and something else. And I deal with a lot of kids today. I have a project in Woodside called Project Mindy, look it up. Look it up. Kids don't know, they don't understand, and they in the middle of it, right around them.
Everyone made some public comment about, there were some concerns around pesticide and chemicals. And so there's a lot of misconception out there about what can, you know, what we put on cannabis plants and. For licensed legal cannabis grow, uh, all cannabis must in one hundred percent pass to go through required testing. We thankfully have an amazing cannabis tech about specific for cannabis in Nevada City. Before cannabis can hit any shelf at a dispensary, first of all, it has to go through a licensed retailer. It has to be tested by perps per billion, perps per billion for microbial content. Pesticides, mycotoxins, heavy metals, and foreign objects. A organic commercial strawberry would not pass. The testing that cannabis is required passed, so by nature, our farmers, they're, they, they can't really put. Bad stuff on their plants where it would have passed testing and it can't make it to the shelf, so that's just a really important thing. Uh, there's a lot of advocacy with our, with public health through the development of state regulations. It's just, uh, in terms of public education around what can actually hit the shelf. Um, that's an important note.
Except, yeah, two, two of the permitted growers sold out of state.
Well, then they should be enforced upon, they should not be. There's ways to enforce against that, they're trying by a state.
Yeah, but, but like, stupid ground, you when you're.
Yeah, I'm only expecting it to show in my house, so.
No, I'm not going to come here.
No, no, the licensing in our county right now is for medical only. But, oh, I'm sorry, I, yeah, yeah. And but on the state level, that, that. Product can be sold in recreational or in medical.
But in our county, it's sold with medical.
Well, no, it's grown, it's medical.
Okay, grown.
So the change to the license type to recreational and adult, this is, everybody in that. At all.
Yeah, it's more of a standard.
It's more, it's, it's a mandate, it's, it's not a condition. I'm going to say it wasn't given by license or adult recreational license, but it's, it's the same thing.
So the pesticide and the things that Diana was just talking about, though, that is not.
Very nice saying, that, that is safe.
So you're, so the legal growers are not really the environmental hazard.
So you're, so the legal growers are not really the environmental hazard. No.
We can't be, we can't be. We have to go, like they were saying, we have to go through the water board. Fishing wildlife, environmental health, all of, we have to list every product that we use. So whether, you know, it's test management.
If you're selling it in the state.
Which is.
I'm sorry.
Still, basically, you do allow us.
Correct. But, but, but back, I mean, you, you're, you're on this whole listen thing, whatever you can, I don't know. And they're selling out of state. That's my point. So if you're gonna, if they're gonna push you on us, cause you think it's the right thing to do. Okay? But you're not, you're not going out and, and making sure you're not doing this measurement. That the people that, that people that you have to live are following rules. It's just your responsibility. That's what this is.
No, to me, I think, to be very clear about what we advocate for is exactly what I stated when I introduced myself. The industry responsibility, which means that our farmers that we are representing are licensed farmers that are following all the state and local requirements, which include selling through legal pathways within the state of California. If you have an experience with a legal farmer that is selling out of state, there are mechanisms. Make sure that that farmer is enforced upon.
Why do I do this? Why aren't you doing this?
No, I'm doing this.
Well, and you guys, but you guys, you guys have always been at it for a year and a half.
She knows me.
I will say to all that, I, I go to the board supervisors and I see Diana there. Telling the board supervisors that she's supporting their programs, the alliance is supporting their program because they wanna get rid of all the illegal growers in our county. So.
But you guys committed to go do the same thing.
What?
Yeah, they, they got like, nothing by, I pull out my cell phone, I have my contacts with DCC, water board, fish and wildlife. And we, and we go on inspection.
Okay.
We go, I, the, the thing is that you don't think, we'll, we respond to every complaint that is filed with us. You submit a complaint, we'll address it.
Okay. Come on home.
I'll give you, that is, that was important changes, but I went over all the things that. Always important, but amongst the ordinance changing, the drone, these are all things that are based on board that is.
Okay, okay. All right.
I, I'm.
I just can't wrap myself.
That's true. As I said, we both spoke and the board supervisor.
We want the same thing, we're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. So how are you, um, how are you protecting people like Thomas? Uh, because I know, like, I found photographers doing real estate who are being threatened. How are you protecting people like Thomas when they go out on these sites? Is that part of the sheriff's department?
Yeah, so, so that's a piece of it. So the sheriff's is a huge security piece. I mean, they go, they're not only with us during the big operations, but we go out to fly the drone, we go out, you know, for first inspection. We have a collaborative team now, where every Monday we meet to decide what day you're going out, what site you're going to, which they will meet you at the county center. Yeah, and it ain't that, it's not ridiculous. Yeah. And the other piece of that is the drones. Before, you have to get very close to the property sometimes to find cannabis. Sometimes you have to go over the whole gate, try to hack on the door. It's not safe. It's not something special to be doing. So the drones will add a huge state against that. I mean, we are partying, we're up, we're down, we're bombing, we attack, send. And if we're uncomfortable, we'll leave. Like, the, the, it's the power.
Me, when I heard about the drone program, because like I'm in the building department all this time and, you know, and everybody's friends and you know what I mean? We can think about somebody like you going out and doing a danger.
It's easy to not call them, we need assistance. Uh, we get the stuff, the doctor inside, contact or contact with the sheriff's office and we're leaving. Inspection tomorrow with the clients. It's a real expensive.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? Any questions from Zoom land that maybe we have?
Anybody online wanna ask a question? I just wanted to mention that I feel like this whole program has made such an improvement. Kind of know it's kind of hard to see that from the big picture and living next to a big grow that's doing things illegally. But I, I feel like with those that have done things, I believe they're just as fresh or always happen in the past. They're good stewards of the land. They want to do things right. Before all of this, I feel like they didn't have much to place in all of this. And now it's all out there for everybody to see and enforce it there.
It's in your face now.
Yeah, but it's, it's, I just feel like it's monitored so much better than ever once before.
Well, with these guys, yeah, no, and like I tried to convince this young lady. Um, I, I know, I know two. Okay? And the only reason I do is because he legal lawyer is buddy of them. And he says, oh yeah, no problem. I know what he, I know what he did. And, and he didn't sell it near the state or in, um, California.
So one of the, this is a little side story, but we also work with the DEA. So we got, we were with the DEA at times as well. So there have been several cases over the last several years and that are still pending, where the DEA has reached out to me and with Thomas. Said, hey, I gotta, I enter simply the package from your county, going Texas or Alabama. What can you tell them? And they're on site, they fly out here, they grab the guy and they're gone. So the DEA is monitoring that. They've already ghosted people into that county.
Cause, cause the county raised my taxes a grand, two grand, excuse me. And, and, and the only thing I'm getting out of is the library. Okay? I'm not getting any support on this deal. So that's where I stand. I'm just frustrated guys, so bear with me. And if you need security, let me know.
You love you.
So is my understanding that the MAC may make a letter of recommendation to supervise and cook about how we feel about the changes to the ordinance?
Yeah, so we can do a number of things. Um, you can compile your comments tonight or you could provide written comments. And the, the notice that's in here at the bottom of it, it has, um, your content. So you could send your comments individually to Ryan here, um, and that information is on the notice that's in the agenda packet. Um, did you get that, Tom? Did you get that?
You can write your comments, uh, to about this before I pull this in.
I'm gonna see him tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Make sure you do that. Okay.
I don't think that's. I don't know. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, gentlemen.
Okay, so next up is the, um, Luzoni ordinance.
Yeah, so there's no other activity. No other action we have to do on, on this. Be sure you like, they have enough information, I guess, to sort of do it. We got a summary of the most.
So what we normally do is the MAC is we can either individually or as a group, we can actually write a letter to supervise the hook suggesting that, you know, the MAC feels that she can support or, or take a negative stance or, you know, so those are the options. Or we can choose, if there's enough variance within the, the committee here, we can choose to just say, we're all going to individually make our own comments.
Okay, in that case, I would recommend that people read the ordinance changes, the proposed ordinance changes. Because we did get a summary, but there's some changes in there that, that, that could be, right in terms of size. Uh, you know, um, larger classes.
Right. And, and to me, I've heard this basic presentation a few times. About leaving the ledge chair and moving association elders. And so we've been engaging.
So yeah, I could, then I would say for others who have not really looked at the ordinance, the proposed ordinance changes, but if they take a look at it, then they have comments. Because this was a summary.
So is that kind of how you see it too, Sarah, that rather than having to try to get a consensus, especially when we still have everybody here? Individual comments instead.
I think that also makes sense. And that'll give you the time to sit down and think about what comments you individually wanna make. And we don't have to come to consensus in a group on like what our move is.
Right.
And the ordinance is on the county limits.
It is.
Yeah, they, they sent a need and personally, like, I like. You know, he was kind of laughing the way I printed out the red line. But I like the red line because it really allows me to fully assess the changes. Right. So personally, that's my preference. It's twenty-five pages. You might not want to print it. You might wanna read it.
Yeah, so Doug, if you look at your email that I sent you a little today, I sent you a link to this notice. And within the notice, there are links to what's with the name of Redline and then the, um.
I look at it, I thought forty-five pages.
I, I'd like to see you guys. But I, I do think it's really important. I know I had a number of community people, actually a lady that lives in Todd neighborhood. She got me for about an hour and a half yesterday. And, um, so I do know it's a real, you know, at the top of a lot of people's minds what's gonna happen. And I just, um, I can't imagine that you're gonna put the genie back in the bottle. And so, um, the other thing I, I should have said earlier is that there was a technical advisory group that went through this whole process and helped the county develop the program. And then now they're refining it based on the complaints. And so I, I mean, you know, it's, it's better to have an ordinance and a law than it is to have had what we had before, which was just a wild, wild land.
And it's not, it takes time, right? It takes time to bring people.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I think it's important and it's a very hot topic. So I think it's wise if everybody goes ahead and, and reviews it and then, um, makes like comments. So. Does that make sense? Thank you. I mean, to me, this, this is how I visualize this.
Yeah, I have my friend.
Yeah. And I'm thinking so much. Okay, cool. And Sarah's gonna present this issue to me. It's a walker too, see?
So I really have the full document, which is a really big one. That's, uh, why I couldn't include it in that, that I've been system dedicated. And. So this is the subject. So I'm gonna, it's, it's the property that we're talking about on this map.
Maybe.
So it's the one that's come up a few times. Um, it's a parcel split out of Moody Flat. And, um. So what we're looking at here is really, um, a mitigated legal declaration that included a whole kind of environmental impact, um, study that looks at like resources that might be impacted by this parcel split. And, um, I reached out to planning with a caution about one item that was in here. So this will really kind of be extended by a lot. But, um, there's a place in this study that said that purpose of this parcel split is to protect the resource amount to the parcels. So the two of the parcels basically are going to be named, um, agricultural. So, um, it's not even like a living at a parcel split with like a whole interview, home development. Um, two of the parcels are going to be.
Which ones are those?
Excuse me for being ignorant, but are all the outline parcels, the subject?
So what I did is I pulled all the parcels immediately off that are most known as road. So this is the parcel they've been tied.
Only that.
It's the big red line. So then, so, so by Mediterranean, this is kind of a little deceptive because the address to this is by Mediterranean. But it actually, the access is from Marina Drive, not by Mediterranean. And the, and the reason why I got kind of a lot more in depth in this is because I have a thirty-seven acre piece listed on by Mediterranean, which is a couple of cars a little over from this. And so I was curious how this was gonna impact the road access, the, uh, by Mediterranean is Joe Miller Ravine. Up on the Lee Flat. And so they have developed in the neighborhood a nine thousand gallon water storage for, uh, system with a hydrant for fire suppression. And so I was just kind of, when I saw by Mediterranean, I thought, oh, I was just gonna impact the water stored and then need them with the capacity and da, da, da. So.
Is Marina Drive the road off of Moody Flat down to the Marina?
Yes. So this.
So the, so this property, Marina Drive goes through this property?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's actually the access. Now. You know, the thing in my mind always when I look at more split, I'm glad to hear what you said about that. Because to me, more density in an area like that, it kind of seems like a fire hazard to start with. Is a little concerning. Moody Flat is one of those roads that I'm in and out all the time. And it kind of worries me because portions of that road are very narrow. And it's already highly impacted in case of the wildwood having to evacuate. And people, I mean, I think around the former and some means in my life, I mean, you know, it's a constant. And so I, I just was a little concerned about additional density in that particular area because the fire hazard and the shape of the current road and. But when I originally was thinking this with, um, by Mediterranean, I was a lot more concerned than I am thinking of it as off of Marina. But still, um, in my mind, there's a lot of fire risk on, in that general.
So in planning, it confirmed for me that, um, like this planning notice really is kind of seeking input on the completeness of the environmental review that was done here. But they will take comments on any aspect of the products doing the deployment.
Okay. So I mean, Martin Wood does a fabulous job. It's a very extensive package that we're looking at.
Yeah, you can see like on page five, you can see it covered all the different topics, like biologists, the geology, soils, noise, et cetera.
Right.
Very comprehensive.
So this is the property that was at one time, I think, sinking to become an amphitheater. So, um, the county went through a lot when that was all happening, but, um, I don't know about anybody else, but in my opinion, the package is really complete. The only thing I can really say I'm really, really concerned about is any additional density creating more fire hazard. And how are we gonna mitigate Moody Flat in general as far as evacuation? Right.
They did have to develop a new road for this, um. I don't know if you remember earlier, I think we were talking about this project, um, they were trying to save section of the fire road. And I forget where it, this is clarified, but they actually have to develop a whole new. In recent years.
But it's on the blue flat, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's, I believe it is.
Yeah, it's on the blue.
Even, even though this property coming out, there's a biometric terrain. Um, the part of biometric terrain that, that this is shown is not actually a completed road.
And do they have to put in, I mean, this is the property, are they gonna be putting on new roads?
Yeah, it does, it does show that here and it was, my recollection is it's a sixty foot. Because the, the county standard now for road width, uh, is related to Cal Fire's new requirements. And so this project does meet that sixty foot wide road within the body of the project.
Within the body of the project.
Right.
Do you want me to make a bit of description? This discussion is a lot of what you're talking about.
Sure.
A tentative parcel map application for going to divide a three hundred and four point three five eight year parcel into four. A tentative parcel map application for going to divide a three hundred and four point three five eight year parcel into four parcels, ranging from forty parcels to a hundred and four point three four acres. The project actually began a plan to allow a start within the area of Seafloak or High Erosion Potentia. Proposed parcels would take access from via Mediterranean, previously Joe Miller Ravine Road. And an existing access road, which would be required to be improved to a fire standard access road within a sixty foot by fire road maintenance for ingress and egress purposes. The fire standard access road improvements would require approximately thirty five hundred linear feet of ground disturbance and improvements along the existing access road to support two ten foot wide quadrades, two foot wide shoulders, and ten foot wide pool modifications zones located within the sixty foot by private facility. Proposed parcel one is developed with single family residential improvements, which are certified in existing subjects and an existing well. Proposed parcel two, three, and four are undeveloped. Building envelopes would contain all habitable structures and are designed to avoid sensitive resources to the greatest extent possible. The properties are intended for the preservation and protection of important agricultural lands that are being used for commercial agricultural production and will be certified onsite well with the subject system. So I think that's exactly what it would be for, that they're just going to stay agricultural.
They're not for now.
That reference you built me in below, which tells me that there's plans, there are going to be a home site at some point.
And there is a home site on the one, it did, it was unconfirmed somewhere. Um, and I did ask planning to, I thought that somebody here might ask if it was a post finished product. And it said there are no applications or anything like that.
It probably wouldn't be. Right, it'll be by the way.
Right, right. So I guess my concern is actually in the verbiage, um, because via Mediterranean is a a private road to my understanding. And so, um, I didn't see how this property has been by legal access in that portion of Mediterranean. It is dirt and gravel for any bad ownership. So I'm I'm a little interested how that all works. But again, you know, I've kind of, I'm just saying, I would slightly recute myself on this because I have a listing near there. And I'm wondering the impact on the subject property that I'm doing, I've written my client.
Well, I think that also gives you greater knowledge of the value of the loss.
Well, thank you, I just don't want to, I don't want to be, you know, having somebody think I was making statements.
No, I haven't said anything to you.
Yeah.
Fire crews out of the area on the Moody Flat. Because they're really burnt out of Lake Wildwood. The last two big parties that I went to, Lake Wildwood, advised people to exit through the north on the Moody Flat. Rather than on the valley road on the backside. So that is one of the two major heat wreck points for Lake Wildwood. For five thousand people trying to get out.
And now on one side of the Moody Flat.
And John Hornet, everybody else.
Right. And yeah, we could look too. Although I guess depending on where it's coming from, you might decide about fitness springs and that way, but uh, it does concern me also because Moody Flat has that sharp drop off. And in a, in a fire, like the campfire, you wouldn't really be able to see very well, the road is not marked. And the grass is waist high all along the edge of that road. So it, you know, I mean, it's just, it feels.
And every small feature.
Right. Feels to me like an area that needs some attention before more development occurs. And that was my opinion. So.
So we have the same option on this one that we have on the other one, um. If you have, you know, certain things that you want to comment on, and you definitely have the expertise of an expert, you can submit whatever comments you have. Um, you can submit them individually through the contact information on that particular notice. Um, or we can come up with a letter from the map, um, that goes to Chair Hook, um, similar kind of thing. And and she would.
I don't think I may inform the motion before the discussion. I don't think I can tell anybody else, but I think it might be more effective if we remain in chat. But we have to serve fire safety and egress period of evacuation.
I agree. If everybody else has any concerns, Bob. You're neutral.
I don't feel strong in one way or the other.
Okay.
How, how many, well, it's going to be four parts, so there might be, eventually there'd be four houses in there. That's inconsequential with relation to uh, exiting out of Lake Wildwood, Moody's last.
Well, except that you have to realize that now because of the state law, uh, any single family residential property can have four units on it.
So it could be sixteen.
Right, is there an age range permit on that, or is it? It's that vast. And so you can have a primary residence, a brandy unit, an ADU, and a gym ready unit, all the same property on any property as long as it physically is set back. And as long as the subject is compatible. So I'm just saying that, you know, you're talking about if you had a family of five and you may have, and that, you know, you could be adding a hundred people very easily having to try exactly, so. You know, that that's the only concern I would have is if it has impact onto that and how I I don't know what the county's plan is for Moody Flat, but it does seem to me like something's going to be done with Moody Flat at some point because it's it's a pretty well traveled road and it's.
GPS, we're tracking it to twenty, but as of now, when GPS takes you.
On the flat all the time, the money. Right, so I don't know, you know, that, that would be my concern.
Okay, so okay, then first thing, can I take another minute from here or absolutely? Um, so the main concerns are about fire and egress and egress on via Mediterranean on Moody Flat.
Certain wild park evacuation.
Yeah, right. Via the weather, right.
And surrounding community.
Okay.
This is not where John wanted. Actually, there is an emergency fire road that comes to via Mediterranean.
Yeah.
From thirty point circle.
Yeah, we can hesitate down the telephone pole, keep down on John Hornet.
Yes. So I guess I would just have that question, Sarah, and it's kind of the mitigating the the impact on evacuation laws. Okay. Anybody else have any comments?
I mean, it's not like a big development.
And I love seeing big parcels, not small parcels, you know, the personal that I like that that would work or tend to be ranch type people. Um, so, um, now we need to move on to the Chair Vice Chair election, election action.
Do you want to take a quick motion to like that you should put this letter together and all put it together and not send it to your original?
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion that, that, and on that, send a letter to Chair Hook relating our concerns about fire safety in the area of the development and, uh, evacuation through a wild park or other emergency. On Moody Flat, on, uh, via Mediterranean and.
A second motion.
Thank you, um, all in favor? Thank you. Now we'll move on to Chair Vice Chair election. And I would just like to note that Mr. Trivel and, uh, Mr. Emerson have both indicated today that they are planning to, um, to to jump off the board to, um, Brian is just really busy with his music. And he feels like he doesn't have the time. And Mr. Trivel, um, has been elected, I don't think it's been confirmed yet because there's been a lot of things going on, but so he's making his effective of January twenty three, but he's not intending to attend any more meetings, um.
And he told me that if somebody needed to take a spot, and look like there's total number of seats on the map, if he will present or.
Okay. He does, or, um, yeah, it's like, like Tom Hartnett can be here, as he had Adam Towne, people here differently than he's expecting. And so having people that are still on the committee but but are not going to go here does affect our form.
Yeah.
So, um, so anyway, I just wanted to say that before we move on to uh, nominations, so Mr. Trivel will not be continuing as Vice Chair because he's.
I have a question, are you willing to consider the chair?
If if nobody else wants to be the chair, that's a good question. But I also feel like if somebody else wants to be our community, I'm happy to step aside.
Well, does anybody here want to be chair? I'm very happy to agree.
Me too.
In fact, to the chance, all right, I I move that we continue Teresa as chair and Doug as Vice Chair.
No, 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 we're not right. I I, if you know, I mean, we're doing, maybe. Next, um, but right now I'm a treasurer of the legislature meeting campaign and, yes. And I'm like almost dating and happy to deal with stuff on legislature meeting campaign.
Doug, would you be the Chair? You're sitting right there at the left hand side of the chair, you might as well be. Three is a really good question.
I feel like that's a really big move, I was just going to say, everything right now is so crazy for me.
And if Teresa remains healthy, it's an easy job. If if nominated, would you accept your aim?
I, I don't feel anything. I am in so much transition at work right now.
Hey, we all, yeah, we all have our other duties.
Yeah.
What about Tom?
I mean, we really can't do that.
We haven't done that in the past with somebody like.
He could be interested, though. We should not think about it.
Although we were supposed to have done it back in July. So we're kind of a little bit of a crunch, right? So, to track up? I'd be willing to do it, I'm very new, so I'm, you know, I might.
Sarah, that needs work. Very little, so what happens is sometimes I'll be talking about like tweets and the vice chair about something. And it's usually just.
Right, I run around and print them and then put, okay, hold to boards. Yeah, I'm really, really, and I'm pretty much usually out here.
Really.
Yeah.
It's an easy job, but cheese.
Yeah, that's all, just keep burning.
And it's just, okay, you see the flow of the meetings, my just connections and I am that, so that, and you have to stick to your role and determine and all, and, um, we'll be able to, there's no, like, okay, I'll see you. It's great.
Okay, so my nomination is for Teresa as Chair and Patricia as Vice Chair.
We made a vote, we made a vote.
Yeah.
Okay. Any opposed? All right, this is, uh, Sarah, very deep technology to discuss before we adjourn.
Um, and don't leave Chair Hood, I'm with her, she's mad. And if you all want to do announcements, that would be now, but I also understand if you want to skip.
I think that wasn't. Okay, I, as you, I've heard, I'm the treasurer of the legislature meeting. And you know, someone.
Or.
Yes, on legislature meeting. Um, so if anyone would like to talk to me about that, I'd be delighted to speak with you about that. About meeting.
And.
Yeah, wait, I have signed the agreement.
Okay. So, um, I think we're talking about talking to the park, and then it's smoking.
Yes, um, our last meeting in this building will be next month. And then after that, we're going to go back to the fire station.
Oh, to the fire apartment?
Yes.
That's good, because the acoustics in here that fits.
Yeah, even for me, Bob, and I was thinking about you too, but even for me, it's too, I really, and I had a couple of people tonight telling me it wasn't working for me.
Yeah, it's.
And I didn't see if I just last night in a different meeting in a different building, and everybody online here did. So it's not the best.
No, the hours weren't really good.
The hours were excellent, so. Yeah, so, uh, I think the texting people loved them same.
So, so, um, the park is getting a grant, and so that's kind of where I was hoping we could have a discussion about like, what they're going to be, and what the campaign and the grant and things like that. I did invite them, Matt, I didn't have any response.
Can we follow through with that? That's a report issue, of course, from here.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, um, yeah, we're excited, for sure, it's.
So the other thing I wanted to mention is that Penn Valley rodeo has its gym camp on the twenty fourth. If anybody knows anybody who would like to come and watch or participate, and then, uh, we have more. Gym camp is kind of like, uh, timed dating from a pushback, they're already seeing, but it's keyhole, it's all kinds of stuff. And then we have a big, uh, horse show going on the next day. And then on October first is our hometown fall festival at the Penn Valley rodeo grounds. And so we have a lot of kids events going on in Pumpkin Patch. We have, we have, uh, like hay rides, um, we have big hay round hay bales, it's for the kids to play with and and there's a lot of free kid activities, like rotary, it's doing arts and crafts, we'll get all, making little spiders out of tumbler pretzels and you know, so anyway, it's going to be just a real fun, it is free entry, you just have to pay for your parking department.
Is there a gold pen?
Um, not that aware, did you want a gold pen?
Trump's in gold.
We have a different hat, I think that's a great idea. It's going to be, it's going to be kids centered. It's going to be, and so we're having beer wine, food vendors, and lots of stuff for kids. And a bounce house and all. Up hill and first. So it's just kind of a local thing that we do at the rodeo to try to say thank you Penn Valley for for all the support and engagement.
And what gender is it?
It's ten to four. I know all the details. I think that's, that's it from anybody else. I thought that was a very good presentation.
Was it, it was a great job.
Yeah.
So the top issue that all of this was individually to do with that.
Definitely.
It is tough, it's a, it's a big issue, it's a tough issue, and um, it's definitely had grown pains in our community, but I do think that they're on the right path with the changes.
In my consideration, it's really big, I mean, I mean, it's it's so frustrating for the legal people to watch these illegal roads, just, they just don't care. They're like, those state lines and.
And unfortunately, people don't differentiate between the legal and the illegal, and so they start everybody in the same pile, and so it, you know.
But even illegal farm next door, they would have a sensitivity to smell, and the legal farms can bug you, so.
I have a very naive question for you. If I, if I have five acres and I want to grow tomatoes, I don't need a permit to do it.
That's right.
Why do you have to have a permit to grow what you grow?
Um, I think there's two big reasons. One is that the state made it a commercial activity. So as a commercial activity, we have to follow an enormous number of regulations and building codes and things like that. So that's one part of it, and the other is the stigma of cannabis and, you know, intoxicating nature, other than all of that, and I think a lot of a lot of illegal farms, like our farm, for example, started because we had friends who had medical issues, and so we underpriced two fifteen, we were growing under two fifteen, we made sales and things like that that had a huge impact on their health, and so for us, that's how we got started and, um. You know, the nature of it, making it commercial changes everything, changes everything. And then state, I wonder, when these did their regulations, they had a one acre cap in regulations. And everywhere, they moved that one acre cap. And so that's why you see what's happening in state of ours and some of these, and all those places where you grow thousands of acres. And so that's, that's made the whole market whole different for everybody. And so all the small craft farms started kind of with the side of the O S C intention to work with medicine. Are in, between rock and hard, because.
I, I guess growing is still illegal federally, correct?
It, it is. It's not, I'm growing, yeah, it is selling, for sure, selling for sure. But there are two, three bills now in front of Congress to make it federally legal, which will be wonderful because of interstate Congress would be about. But, but, you know, Oklahoma, for example, convention, so with conventional, but Oklahoma has no restrictions. And so, you know, what illegal people think they could do, assuming they're from New York, example, isn't happening, it's not, because it's in Oklahoma.
Is climate a big factor in growing? Is climate a big factor? I mean, is California the world's best place to grow?
It definitely is.
Well, it's indoor.
Yeah, but.
You're not with the rest. Right?
I mean, the, the county is one of the best places to grow in California. Because even Emerald Triangle, they have log and, yeah. The bad county is incredibly well-suited, and there's a lot of micro plants there too, but, but, yeah.
When my mom had cancer, I lost a lot of, you know, this home that I wanted to assist her.
Yeah, it has, it has amazing effects on our, I guess.
Yeah, attention, nauseousness away, and the staff really helped topically with where she had bone cancer, the, the pain outside and. So, yeah, so, you know.
There is that side of it, but then there's the whole celebrity, you know, you don't want to get super high and all of that. That's not, that's not what we're doing, that's not what we want to do.
Right, that's not the crack farm and stuff.
No, it's not.
I have to say, poor Diana kind of gets beat up on, and she's, she is such a nice person, and she's so knowledgeable. Yes.
It's the whole, or, just on the.
The missionary for their husband, she had a cancer, I'm such an intellectual on the race and. She's, she's got, she's really developed some thick skin now.
Yeah, you have to, yeah, it's really.
So, okay, so anyway, so if, if there's no further discussion, I will take another motion to overturn.
So who?
Anybody?
Derek.
All in favor?
I'm.
Okay, we'll be carried, thank you.